Good morning. Sorry about the delay. I will go ahead and call to order a meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners, and we will start with our roll call.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners Wooden.
Here.
Teal. Sparks. Ponstein. Pakla. Oliver King. Merchant. McLeod. LaGrand. Coleman. Hildenbrand. Hennessy. Vice Chair Green. Diaz. DeBoer. Burl. Boujack. Breevy. Baker. Antor. Chair Stuck. Mr. Chair, you have 20 members present, one absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. I will now call on Commissioner Antor for the invocation.
All right, good morning, everyone. I just want to take a moment and ask for everyone here to pray for the family of Steve Warren. I think most of you are aware that we lost Steve. He was a great man and a friend of mine and a real, a great public servant in his work with the Road Commission, and we lost him way too early. It's just a real shame, and I think we all have a lot of respect for him, and please think about his family during this time. I was thinking about what I wanted to talk about this morning. I actually invited someone else to do the invocation, but I was reminded in Matthew, I believe it was Matthew 25, where Jesus said, "Whatever you do for the least of us, that you do unto me." And I was thinking about that, and the person that I can think of that embodies that probably as much as anybody that I've ever known is Pastor Daniel Scott. Now, he comes in here every meeting, and he does what he does because he embodies that Scripture. His whole ministry on the southeast side of Grand Rapids is looking out for and taking care of the very least of us and those that are the most vulnerable, and I've grown to have a great deal of respect for him. He's become a friend and a confidant and even a mentor that I rely on and call often in my struggles, and I just wanted you to welcome him in to do our invocation this morning.
Thank you, Commissioner Antor. Very kind words. And greetings, Chairman Steck, Commissioners, staff, fellow citizens, in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. I want to thank Commissioner Antor for asking me to share with you today. I'm humbled and grateful and honored. Commissioner Antor has been a blessing and encouragement to me as we have gotten to know each other, and I'm very grateful for his service here, personal encouragement and friendship, as he mentioned before. He truly loves the Lord Jesus Christ, and he loves the people of Kent County. Chairman Steck, Commissioner Antor said, "I can take as long as I want." Just joking.
Thank you.
Well, once again, I wanted to mention that I'm willing to pray for any of you outside of these meetings, ask for my phone number, my email address, whether it's personal, family, your work here, or those of you that have a business. Let me say here that over the many months that I have had the privilege to be with you at these meetings, I commend you for always opening in prayer. I believe these prayers truly make a difference at these meetings and in the county as a whole, for when we pray, we're acknowledging that we need the Lord, and we certainly need the Lord in these days, perilous days, uncertain days. In fact, the word invocation, according to Webster, means the act of calling on the Lord, so you've been doing that all these years. Just a couple Scriptures I want to share before I pray. The Lord proclaims in His Word, Proverbs 14:34, that righteousness blesses a nation or a county, but sin is a curse to its people. And again, I would appeal to you as leaders with a lot of power and authority and a loud voice, that you would seek the Lord as you govern here, especially through His Word. Every detail of life is addressed in His Scriptures, either directly or indirectly, and you'll know the difference between righteousness and wickedness. Secondly, James 1:5 tells us, "If any of you need wisdom, let them ask of the Lord, who gives His wisdom to anyone generously and without reproach." And what greater wisdom can He give? From His Word, His eternal Word. Let's pray. Oh heavenly Father and almighty Lord God, Creator and sustainer of all the universes, we do come to you now, in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, your only begotten Son, who shed His innocent blood on that cross, that cruel cross, over 2,000 years ago, to pay for every one of our sins and the penalty of those sins, that if we would repent and call upon Him to save us from the penalty of our sins, which is an eternity in hell, you will give us eternal life. We plead for your forgiveness and cry out for your mercy today, for as a nation, as a state, as a county, as a city, because we have sinned greatly against you. But we cry out to you for this body of commissioners today and in the days ahead, that they would seek and ask for your wisdom, so that they could govern in a righteous way, in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The next item on the business is special order of business. However, I am going to use my authority and discretion as Chair to move that item to the end of the agenda. That brings us to public comment. Now your opportunity, if anyone from the public wishes to address the board on agenda items only, agenda items only, you may do so now. Please identify yourself. Oh, wait, we have sign cards this time. All right, so I will go with a sequence that the clerk calls with respect to that, but please remember, it is agenda items only, and you should identify the item that you wish to address.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First up is Amy from Grand Rapids.
My comment is regarding the John Ball Zoo Master Plan.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Amy Hinman, and I live on Ives Avenue southwest in Grand Rapids. I would respectfully ask you to table the 2023 John Ball Zoo parking amendment. I don't make this request lightly, and I also don't have any rose-colored glasses on. They are burgundy. I'm simply asking for what the community wants, and that's a solution that doesn't destroy the park. The revised 2023 amendment still destroys the park. Our team did collaborate with the county to adjust the amendment, and I've been grateful for the time the administration has given us, and I think some of these changes are a step in the right direction. Our community is ready to support practical solutions, but to make practical solutions happen, we need more time. Please help us get there. I'm being a stickler because we're in a uniquely terrible situation that I'd like to lay out for you. The county's job here is to protect county interests. The city doesn't want to get involved in county business. Our neighborhood association's funding prevents the executive director from working in our neighborhood, and even then, J.BAN, John Ball area neighbors, only writes letters of non-objection, so they can't go to bat for us. So whose job is it to go to bat for us? It's no one's. It's just the community supporting the community. So I hope you understand that's why we've been sending you so many emails. I've also been reflecting on something Commissioner Coleman said in a previous meeting. How do we get communities to support themselves so the government doesn't have to? This was in regards to pregnant mothers, so it's a different application, but it's still true. We meet each other in the park, and we take care of each other outside of it. I know the keys to some of these people's houses, and this is how people in our community have been supporting one another for the past 130 years. So yes, this is about retaining wall height and road width, but at the center, it's about community, and I'm absolutely certain that if your neighbors told you that they would move if the zoo paves the park by your home, you would make the same choices we've made. If you received emails saying people would drop their support of the zoo and vote against their millage if the zoo paves the park by your home, I believe you email commissioners like crazy, too. I think we can find a solution that receives minimum significant resistance. We just can't do it alone. Please table the amendment and give us time to collaborate, improve plans, and codify a community benefits agreement. Finally, if you're voting on this request, I have one last ask. Please visit the park today or sometime and just look around. Walk the paths, look at the trees, and think about the people who planted them 130 years ago, knowing that we'd be here today to care for them. I want everyone here to remember John Ball Park as it is and as it should be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam Clerk.
Mr. Chair, next up is Jenna.
Thank you.
My name's Jenna Lyons. I live on Garfield Avenue southwest. I'm here to speak on the John Ball Zoo Master Plan issue. Good morning. I'm here today to ask the county commissioners either to table or vote no on the resolution to pave sections of the historic John Ball Park. This is the third time I've personally commented on this issue in front of at least some, if not now all or many, of the county commissioners. As a neighbor of the park, I'm asking that the county allow us to continue our efforts to, like, work with the zoo, come up with alternate plans, and that the, and continue to address the needs of the neighborhood. A year and a half ago, I chose to move to Grand Rapids over all other Midwestern cities and bought a home so close to the historic John Ball Park. I chose Grand Rapids because I felt it had, was a smaller, more close-knit community. It was a place I could help shape for the future, and I've been, as a result of this issue, getting more and more involved in my local community and issues. That's what I'm here to do today. I just want to ask you to consider the future impact of this decision, to think through better options, to realize there are better options, and to work with the community to shape the neighborhood for the future. In these past few months that we've been aware of the zoo's plans to pave significant sections of historic John Ball Park, we have been given input, or we've given input and concerns from the community to the zoo. We've even begun working on a community benefits agreement with the zoo, and it's important that we have the opportunity to continue this vital work. Our fear is that if this resolution moves forward without these efforts considered, that the neighborhood will lose lines of communication and what little influence we have with the zoo. The urgency of this matter is, has been manufactured by the zoo. Since we know construction takes time, there is nothing that says this has to happen today. If you look outside, it's not happening today. The zoo, or this or that nature of why we have to go with the 2023 amendment is also manufactured, since we know that there are other options that the zoo can pursue, and we, as a community, have considered and proposed many of these other options. I ask that the commissioners consider this work and at least table, or better yet, vote no on this resolution to pave parking lots in historic John Ball Park until we've had more time for community involvement and to shape a better alternative that actually considers the needs of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, next up is Margot.
Good morning.
Hi. I am Margot Sedini-Johnson. I am a resident and a business owner on Butterworth Avenue. I am part, I'm steward for West Town Commons. I'm on the urban forestry group, Friends of Grand Rapids Parks, and I created and maintained five pollinator gardens throughout the neighborhood. We have offered many fair and valid options to the city and to the zoo, sorry, the county, and to preserve green space and trees and maintain the quality of life for our neighbors. So first, before I get into what those options are, I just want to say that we are asking for an earnest review of the plan that gets implemented and shared with us before it goes on the county agenda. And we, I do ask for a pause, ask for a pause, because we're making great progress. And if I do oppose the 23 plan primarily besides the parking lots, which remove a foot of soil and puts aggregate in it, and then a petroleum-based product on top of it, but that 22-foot-wide road that goes through it, too. And it will ruin roots of many of the trees that are near it, and we are very worried about that tree canopy. So we've offered many options. One is off-site parking. You have many properties near the park. You got the trailhead at Millennium Park. You have your administrative buildings off Wealthy. You have the Butterworth landfill. Here is a land that can't be used, but the EPA recommends it for parking, but it's been struck down because, according to some research the zoo did, they'll lose 30% of the growth in their visitors because people don't want to mess with a shuttle or walk that far. And it's interesting that they don't want to walk that far, because I've attended the amphitheater meetings from Grand Action and the soccer field, and there, they don't need onsite parking or that much onsite parking, because people, according to their studies, are willing to walk 15 minutes, which is about a mile. And I know the argument is, well, we have young families come. Well, I had a young family. I have visited many venues that require that I walk a distance, no longer than what we've been recommending as an alternative to an onsite facility. So go, oops. So don't accept 23. And, oh, and let's go back to negotiations, because I think there's some valid options out there.
Thank you. Now, just remind folks, we have a three-minute limit on this, and I know that might seem unfair, but we have a lot of folks that probably want to talk, so I'm going to try to stick with that three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Peter Carlberg, next.
Okay, she said my name. 71 Richards Avenue Northwest, right down the street from the park. I brought some visual aids today. First one. This is, this is where we began in 2001, the orange here being the extended zoo development at that time. There was a operating agreement in place where the gray here, that would be the zoo area, that's, they have a demarcation line like that. This is where we are today. Notice how much the zoo and gray stuff has spread in here and across here. But this is what it would be with the, with the new master plan, 2023. Along this perimeter border up here is this road planned to be bulldozed all the way through the park, from Fulton to Butterworth, to control access to the new parking lots they would build in these other places. Interestingly, it's hard to find, the road is hard to find in the actual printed master plan in all the pages, but it's dotted line that shows up here and there. And what also shows up over here is a proposal for a ramp after they get done paving everything in the park, basically. We suggest that we go to the ramp right away, instead of paving the park first and then going to a ramp. Here's the 2001 master plan, whoop, master plan made by Ken Polikowski, professor of University of Michigan, renowned zoo designer, and this was his compromise proposal in 2001. Notice over here, as, there's a long, big parking lot along Butterworth. That would be an ideal location for a ramp. Oh, and you could build ramps in stages. You don't have to build them all at once. You can build them a level at a time. They have already constructed, across here, a pathway going straight to their new entrance plaza, so that's already there. And a ramp here would be just as close to the zoo entrance as the places their parking car is now, and people are walking. Anyway, that would be the progressive thing, would be to go to this ramp instead of paving the park first, and we could all be in agreement on this and help raise money for it. Yes, it'll cost more than just paving the park, but obviously, there are other costs to paving the park.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up is Nate.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Nate Hunt, here to talk about the zoo. Just want to talk about how we got here, some of the historical context, and how I think we can adopt a win-win solution to get us out of this predicament. So, the 140-year-old John Ball Park has been a place of solitude and sanctuary for generations of Westsiders and city residents. Unfortunately, that all began to change in 1987, when the city sold the park and zoo to the county. In order to sell the park, the city had to get approval from city voters, so the city bypassed the will of voters by removing the park's classification from John Ball Park, killing the park and allowing the sale to go through. This treatment is nothing new for Westsiders. Local government has always considered the Westside residents to be disposable. Residents have long had to deal with the pollution from the highway, which contributes to increased rates of respiratory illnesses. Additionally, longtime residents of the park neighborhood have lost loved ones to cancer caused by the toxic waste dumped at the Butterworth landfill, and more recently, cancer rates due to the spewing of airborne carcinogens from a nearby medical facilities plant has caused cancer in many folks. This was all documented over the last several years by Egle in public hearings. And now, as if to add insult to injury, the zoo is ignoring reasonable requests from neighbors to continue to use the grass for parking while it acquires funding for a parking garage. The zoo is suddenly rushing through a parking plan that is wildly unpopular with residents and trying to convince all of you that this has to happen right now and that this is the only solution that will work, despite record-breaking attendance for the zoo under the status quo and many feasible solutions proposed by residents. Commissioners, I'm here to ask you to please not let the zoo bully you today, to not limit your choices to just what they're proposing. I'm asking you to please table this vote and to actually sit down with the community like many of you have said you would the last time this was tabled. To those of you who have sat down with us and helped us and heard our proposals and donated time, thank you. You know who you are. We need your continued support and help to implement meaningful changes, and we need you to exercise the power you have to amend the zoo's plans, to, to add in community-driven solutions that are cost-effective and that give the zoo the parking it needs while also preserving a 140-year-old historic park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up is Daniel Allen Scott.
Well, you found a way to get here three times, didn't you?
Thank you. I feel so welcomed. Well, actually, I live one block east of the park and the zoo on Garfield. Many people think I live in the zoo, but I live near the zoo. And so my sentiments are the same as has been expressed. I've lived there 30 years, and even as I look at this beautiful little girl here, it reminds me of my two children, my adult son here, Matthew, and my daughter Rachel, spent so much time in that park as they were growing up, on the ball field, at the basketball court, and on that beautiful green space right along Valley, between Fulton and Butterworth. And so I would say amen to what they've been asking. I would hate for that beautiful green space to go. I appreciate how much the zoo is of value and how it's increased in importance and so on. But yeah, that's important to us, and, you know, it's easy to make a decision if you don't live near there, but it is precious property, and it's a nice place to go, even as an old man. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, we have Caleb.
Good morning. Good morning. My name's Caleb Takama. I'm here to comment on the John Ball Zoo Master Plan. I live at Park and Ives. We at Save John Ball Park have been busy trying to work with the zoo since November's Finance Committee meeting. Most notably, we provided scaled requests, some are included in the revised plan. The most substantial improvements are included are shrinking the retaining wall on the hill and saving the playgrounds. Most of us didn't know that the retaining wall was going to be cut into the hill or that playground removal was part of the plan. I definitely didn't know. That said, some other revisions the zoo made are far from what we asked. Walking paths are important, so the park will be accessible and safe for everyone. At no time did we ask for them to be removed entirely, yet this revision has no paths. We don't want tennis courts turned into a driveway. We asked for the courts to be moved. We also want that driveway rerouted to protect the willows, which are a keystone species. The tennis courts have vanished from the plan. Somehow, through this insane game of telephone, the zoo has come up with this plan that has deviated greatly from what we asked for. I also want to comment on the maps that have been presented. The 2015 Master Plan offers three different parking lot layouts. The zoo has consistently shown all three mashed together, but this overlay is not an actual plan. The 2015 final report, page 26, shows a preferred parking lot expansion that is very similar to Phase 1 of 2023 and does not remove the pavilion. 2015 is what I prefer, but the zoo has been presenting it in a format that looks worse than it is. The 2023 amendment has been presented with varying amenities, and one version implied a five-acre parking garage would be built over the entire field to the south of the pavilion. This would be absurdly large. Their maps also consistently show about 4,200 feet of new driveway, which is an additional 2.15 acres of paved area. This paved space was not talked about with the paved parking expansion. These maps look unresolved. This whole process has been confusing and has made good collaboration difficult. It needs more time. More robust communication is needed between neighbors and the zoo and the county. Vote no on 2023 or table this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Mr. Chair, next we have Dee Jones.
Hold on, can I still give general public comment?
Can you what? Agenda items only. If you have general items, you can talk later. If you have general items, you can come back later.
Yeah, just one in general.
Okay.
Next, we have Matea Repart.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Matea Repart. I live on the west side, near the park. If only you could have seen the tracks in the snow recently, significant animal tracks, cross-country skiing tracks, human tracks, footprints, playing tracks. It was tremendous. The park is indeed a zoological garden in its natural state. Let's keep it that way. I'd like to acknowledge Commissioners Steck, County Administrator Vandenberg, Director Spencer, for the time that you've had in talking with neighbors. Thank you. But I speak to all of you today, acknowledging that your role is to make decisions that the public can support, and the public does not support the zoo's amendment, as evidenced by, by the survey that we have, by many who have spoken out. And throughout the county, I know I've spoken to folks in Wyoming, Genesee, and Hudsonville. They're frustrated and disappointed with the zoo's plans to pave the park. This is not just impacting Westside residents, and we want the zoo to succeed. We want our community to thrive, and we want to preserve a treasured community asset. And we have been asking to be in partnership with the zoo, for us all to be at the same table, and that has not been possible. And since November, we've been asking to have a fundamentally different kind of conversation, and those conversations have not yet happened. Yet those in community continue to Yet, those in community continue to step up and offer our voice and perspective. And on principle, we ask for you to prioritize the voices of those most affected by these institutional decisions. And we make no mistake in naming that the zoo's plan is causing harm to our community, and we are not in collective agreement. We don't want incremental changes that continue harm. We remain committed to exploring what generates the most amount of good. So, we applaud the zoo's stated values and encourage them to remain vigilant and steadfast to those values even when they come at a cost. We need each other, and the zoo needs its community, especially public support for future endeavors. And we see possibilities for resolution, for innovative partnership, for inspired leadership, for action that aligns with the values of community, compassion, and conservation. And our commitment as neighbors is continue to think creatively and explore and pursue possibilities. We ask you to create structures and policies that protect and preserve this historic public green space. And we ask you to encourage the zoo to remain steadfast to their values and put forth a plan that the public can support, especially a plan that includes future-oriented and innovative public parking and transportation solutions and preserves green space on public land. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Next, we have Rachel Verwies.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Rachel Verwies, and I live on the southeast side of Grand Rapids, near Garfield Park. And I'm here today as a neighbor and a mom and the CEO of Safe Haven Ministries to talk about the couple of agenda items you have for the Collaborative Task Force Against Human Trafficking. I was talking with the sheriff beforehand about a conversation we had in 2017. At the time, we had finished listening to our community leaders around, really, all of Kent County about the issue of human trafficking. January is Human Trafficking Awareness Month. So, it's fitting that this is an agenda item for you this month. And what we heard clearly was awareness was not enough. We had done a lot of training. We had done campaigns as a whole community to talk about the issue of human trafficking. And we knew there needed to be more action. At the time, we had very limited monetary resources. We had leaders who are passionate. We had different sectors involved. And yet, we needed policy change. We needed more resources to be committed to helping victims of human trafficking and keeping those accountable who are doing harm. At the time, on Division, there was a sign on the corner of Burton. It was a XXX. It had been there for order of over 30 years in our community. And it marked the place of an illicit massage business. For 30 years, people had driven past it, seen it, knew what was happening. And yet, in a lot of ways, we tolerated, as a community, the commodification of people. We have a problem with human trafficking in our own community. And today, you have the opportunity to commit more resources to solve that problem, to bring collaborative solutions. I am filled with gratitude that the sheriff was willing to listen those years ago and sit and talk about how we could collaborate with one another. We need more accountability for the complexity of this problem. At the time, we had a half-time detective from the sheriff's department, and that was the only detective assigned to human trafficking in our whole county. And today, we have multiple detectives because we have come together to talk about how to build solutions around a complex problem. We've moved to a more victim-centered and survivor-centered approach, and we are seeing change happen. If you read news headlines, you'll see that we've made different types of arrests and investigations because of the commitment that has happened from the sheriff's department and other jurisdictions as well, along with social services. We continue to have monthly meetings that bring together collaborative leaders. And so, today, I'd urge you to support the donations that have come in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Mr. Chair, next we have Jessica Powell.
Zoom, right? Okay. Just one moment. Hello, my name is Jessica Powell. I'm a lifelong resident of Grand Rapids. I've lived in Dayton Street for 19 years. I've been going to John Ball Park all my life. Now, I share my love for the park with my family. We are part of this community that loves and regularly uses this amazing park. The park provides a green space escape in the middle of the city. It has so much history and memories for everyone here. The park is free for everyone to enjoy. You can enjoy the woods, open green space, bird watching, forest bathing, trees, shade, flowers, soccer, basketball, tennis, biking, walking, running, hiking, skiing, snow sheing, walking your dog, barbecuing, picnicking, four playgrounds, a duck pond, and two pavilions. I'm counting on you all to vote no on the 2023 amendment. Yes, I know that means the zoo will default to the 2015 plan, and they threaten to implement that regardless of what the community wants. But why? Why is the zoo in such a rush to pave over parkland when there is a significant community pushback to do so? Why won't the zoo work with us to come up with a better plan, better parking solution that works for everyone? Why can't the zoo be good neighbors to us? There is no rush to pave the park. The zoo can continue parking cars on the grass until we agree on a better solution that doesn't involve paving 10 to 12 acres of green space. They can totally do this. You requested that the zoo conduct a town hall with the community. Unfortunately, they did not conduct a real town hall as they are determined to complete their agenda regardless of what we think. The maps they provide the community lack information and transparency. I just found out this week that they are planning to put a 22-foot-wide road through the entire park. I vehemently oppose this road. I also found out that they want to put a four-foot retaining wall next to the forest line. I oppose this concrete wall. At our last public comment, the community showed up and gave you many valid reasons not to pave the park. They also presented viable alternatives to the zoo's plan. This awesome group of people have great ideas, and we need more time to work with the zoo if they would be open to work with us. I want to believe that the Commissioners here care about the community. I felt that in our last public comment when I heard a number of you say that you were on our side, that you didn't want to pave over the beautiful historic John Ball Park. This park is really about community. The community is saying, "Don't pave paradise and put it in a parking lot." We want the opportunity to work with the zoo to develop a better plan forward. We want time to put a community benefits agreement into place prior to construction. A CBA will help build our relationship with the zoo and regain the community's trust. Also, it's very important to us to preserve the old-growth trees in the park. They are absolutely beautiful. My four-year-old son is very against paving the park. He asked me to tell you this. Don't pave the park, you sillies. Vote no today.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is the last card we have. It's for Herb Siemens.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm an Eastsider, so... But, and actually, I don't go to the zoo that much. But as a city resident, I do have a problem with this plan that the zoo is pushing on everybody. I understand that there's a need for paved parking. Okay, give them some parking, and under the 2015 plan, they can do that. But they want to build a road straight through the park, and to me, that's an invitation for disaster. A park where children might be playing, one gets loose, somebody's dog gets loose, somebody's speeding down that road, and they get run over. Just because the zoo wanted to put this road in, that's dangerous. Plus, remember, the zoo, when they spend money to build something, it has to be maintained. And is the park system ready for this extra maintenance? It seems like the zoo is not working with the public to come up with something that's a solution for everybody. They're just pushing this plan based on some survey that said, "People won't come here if they have to use the shuttle." But if they go to Cedar Park, Cedar Point, they'll use the shuttle. It doesn't account for using more bus transit. The Silver Line goes from Walker downtown. Hop on that to go to the zoo because it goes right by there. We have to think towards the future. Let's not spend money like a drunken sailor because you got it, and you just got to have this plan ready, and you got to spend it because the plan isn't really inclusive. It doesn't totally make sense. At least, get rid of that road. You don't need to pave that. We already have streets. We got driveways into the parking lots. Let's work with that and then, and give you some paved parking, and people can pay for that paved parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is that the last of the pre-signed?
It is indeed.
All right. Well, again, I don't want to foreclose anyone. If there's anyone else here that, from the public, that wishes to address the board with respect to agenda items only at this point. I... Yes, okay. Are you one or two speaking? I don't know.
He might murmur a few words that I say, but it's mostly me. I didn't really have anything written out or planned.
I'm sorry. Can you state your name and address?
My name is Brandon Wang, and I am a resident of Standale. I live about probably two miles away from John Ball Park on Lake Michigan Drive. And we frequent the park.
Oops, that's my district, so you get five minutes. No, you only have three minutes, I'm sorry.
I appreciate it. But we frequent the park, and it is a very lovely area. And like, I know there was just the new Meadow Park that was, put up the industrial one, and we haven't gotten a chance to check that out yet. But we would love to be able to have more time in the park, to be able to explore it and go on all the trails. And I know that when roads get paved and structures are put up, it displaces the wildlife in the area. And I know that there are many deer over there. There are many geese and ducks, raccoons. I've seen beavers over there, all sorts of animals. And the people I know will not really like those animals in their yards. And people will probably complain about the wildlife having to find a new place to live and that place that they need to live being where they conveniently live too. And, yeah, it just, you're not just putting up a parking lot. You are displacing the old-growth trees. You are displacing all the animals who reside in that area just because you guys need a place to park. But I also know that, like, a potential suggestion would be that, I know there are many abandoned, like, structures, buildings that could be repurposed into a parking structure. And you guys could even have a bus or something to shuttle the people from that parking structure to the park. You guys could have it be a paid amenity, so that way you can make even more money off of that. And I'm sure that there are many solutions that we can even brainstorm and come up with if you guys will just listen to the public, the public who so clearly does not want to have this done, the people who... Everyone here wants to work with you guys. We don't have any negative opinions about you, I'm sure. I can speak for myself at least. But I know that everyone here is willing to come up with solutions to be able to do something other than pave this beautiful area. Thank you.
Thank you, both of you. All right. Anyone else? All right. If not, I will close public comment. And we will now move to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. And I will call on Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move public comment, or excuse me, the consent agenda.
Motion made to approve the consent agenda. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Boujack? Questions or comments on that? I see none. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Wooden,
Yes.
Teal, Sparks, Ponstein, Pakla,
Yes.
Oliver King, Merchant, McLeod,
Yes.
LaGrand,
Yes.
Coleman,
Yes.
Hildenbrand, Hennessy,
Yes.
Vice Chair Green,
Yes.
Commissioners Diaz,
Yes.
DeBoer,
Yes.
Burl,
Yes.
Boujack,
Yes.
Breevy,
Yes.
Baker,
Yes.
Antor, Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 21 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you. We will now move to our resolutions, and the first one is Resolution 8A. And I will turn this over to Corporate Counsel Linda Howell.
Good morning. In compliance with our rules regarding conflicts of interest, Chair Steck informed me of a business engagement that arose last week that could create the appearance of conflict of interest through a tangential connection to the zoo. Chair Steck is an attorney affiliated with the firm of Miller Camfield, a firm of over 100 attorneys. Other attorneys in the firm recently undertook a new engagement without the chair's knowledge or involvement. While there would not be an actual involvement of Chair Steck in this engagement, and it will not create any financial benefit for Chair Steck to avoid even the question or appearance of a conflict, Chair Steck will recuse himself from the zoo matter on today's agenda. Vice Chair Green will preside over this agenda item.
All right. So, we will move and take up Resolution 8A, and I will call on Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Vice Chair, kind of Chair Green. I would like to move Resolution 9 of today's date to amend the 2015 John Ball Zoo master plan.
It's been moved. Is there support? Support by Commissioner DeBoer. Is there discussion on the item? All right. Just a moment. I just wanted to put out some ground rules real quick. I don't want you guys thinking that we're going to throw out our normal rules of engagement for discussion because we have a substitute teacher, so... Commissioners are reminded to keep their comments directed at the chair. Commissioners are also reminded that we should try to keep our comments to five minutes or less. If Commissioners have questions on the resolution, they'll be directed at the chair and answered by County Administrator Al Vandenberg or Strategic Impact Director Josh Spencer. All right. And I'm not as quick at taking down notes on who wants to speak as Chair Steck, so... Thank you. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair Protam. I just, so, sitting on the Finance Committee, we've spent a lot of time considering this and some of the plans and as they've evolved. And challenging issues around kind of tension between, you know, needs of people in the immediate vicinity of John Ball Zoo and Park and people throughout the county and even outside of Kent County who utilize the zoo and park. So, really, really challenging issues. I mentioned this in one of the finance meetings. I don't remember which. But one of the things that I really like about the 2023 amendment is it really does move some additional parking closer to the entrance of the zoo for those with accessibility challenges. The outlot that's currently grass but utilized for parking most days of the zoo season. If you're coming in with accessibility challenges, wheelchair or otherwise, that's really quite a distance and quite difficult to kind of navigate. So, I appreciate that aspect and some other aspects of the 2023 plan. I also understand, you know, some of the concerns that many in the community have about the plan. I would be remiss if I didn't mention that I, having sat around this table for many years now, I think I'm in my 10th year on the commission, I've seen a lot of kind of controversial items and, you know, public getting involved in communicating their perspective on those items. I've seen often where, you know, people do that poorly. But through all the conversations around this particular issue, the, there's been so many examples of how to be effective when communicating on an issue. Emails that are just thoughtful and really proactive work by everyone, you know, in the red shirts here today, but many, many others who... work by everyone, you know, in the red shirts here today, but many, many others who, who aren't just expressing their concerns, but have been throughout this process, working to, to practically suggest other solutions and, and balance, you know, kind of tensions between competing interests. And so I, I just want to applaud all of those who have really put in efforts to get their perspective across. I think it, it has made a difference in this process from my perspective. And then, and then we're, we're left here just considering, since the zoo is an independent entity, really our, our role here, as I understand it, and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, is, is just considering between these two plans, there, there will be expanded parking, the zoo has studied that, and the zoo board is recommending doing expanded parking, and, and so it's really a question of, as this process is going through and all the work has been done, which plan is the right one at this point. I, I wish there was, you know, some perfect plan that addressed all concerns, but for, for that particular role that we have, it, it seems to me the 2023 amendment is better than the 2015 option. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I have a question for the administration, if I may. If we were to, if the board was, if the county board was to hypothetically table this motion, would that automatically mean that the zoo board and the zoo is obligated to move forward with the 2015 plan, like they have to? Or would that just allow for, you know, potential changes to be made, or what would, what would happen in that circumstance?
At, at any point, the zoo board could abandon their request for the 23 amendment and move forward with the 15, 2015 plan. So they would not be obligated to do that.
And so they essentially have the ability and authority to do, to either move for the 2015 plan or to pause that development?
That is the zoo board's choice.
Okay, thank you. I ask that because I very much dislike making short-term decisions as a government official, and I just, essentially, I dislike government making short-term decisions, and I dislike making uninformed decisions even more so. If I'm not mistaken, a lot of this conversation and haste in moving forward is originating from this study that the zoo conducted, and I don't know about our colleagues, or my colleagues, but I have not seen this study yet. I don't think any of us have, and I asked to see it at the last time that we spoke about this, or last, I mean, the last time we spoke about this. It seems to me that this is another case of trying to make money and trying to make profit at the expense of people, and I don't agree with that at all. We, I don't, I don't, in my short time on, on the board, I don't think I've received more public comment and public engagement on any other issue, more so than this one. And I think that we would be neglecting our responsibility, responsibility by moving forward today with any decision on the zoo, especially as the city is moving forward with a master plan to discuss what, what the city should look like in the future, and for the next 10 years at least. I think it's our responsibility as a county board to engage with the public and to engage with the city to come up with a reasonable, logical, long-term solution for the zoo. My ideal scenario would be us tabling this, this decision for today to allow for a comprehensive town hall, comprehensive discussion between all three entities, the city, the county, and the public. And so I'd like to make a motion to table this resolution. I know that that doesn't mean that the zoo is going to have to pause development, but I hope that they would. So I'd like to formally make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Diaz. Does that motion to table supersede other motions, Linda?
While the motion to table is, is, has been presented, it becomes a primary motion. So we need to, we need to have a second and then a motion, a vote on the motion to table.
Okay, there's been a motion made to table the item by Commissioner Diaz. Would that be a motion to, Commissioner, would that be a motion to postpone the item with a date certain or postpone indefinitely?
It would be to postpone indefinitely.
Okay. Is there support for the motion?
Support.
It's been moved by Commissioner Diaz and supported by Commissioner Sparks. Is there discussion on the motion? Commissioner Baker.
First, I'd just like to know what the immediate consequence would be of, of tabling this. So what happens if this motion is tabled, given that the zoo has the authority to continue with the 2015 plan? So is there some sense of if this decision was postponed, would the actions be postponed, or would there be some other actions taken?
My sense of it is that the zoo would move forward with the 2015 plan, that there's a sense of urgency that's been expressed by the zoo board to get moving on doing the parking.
Thank you. Commissioner Wood.
Thank you, Chair. So, yeah, pertaining, building on Commissioner Baker's question, has, you know, the zoo has, for the last nine years, had the, the current 2015 master plan at their disposal. Have they, since we tabled the previous motion in committee, has the zoo in fact even taken steps to proceed with any iteration of the 2015 plan with staff to develop a, a final version, given that there's different variations in the master plan, that some of those variations also encroach upon the 150-foot buffer? Have they gone beyond stating this would be our intention? Have they actually taken steps to proceed with that as a, as a secondary option if this amendment is either tabled or defeated?
So based on the engagement process that we had with the neighborhood, since the Finance Committee meeting, there were several changes which have been referred to as more minor, and I would, I would agree with that. If the goal is to not pave a road or a parking lot, then yes, they are more minor compared to that. And it, it was a challenging timeline, you know, from the last meeting to actually get some of that more formalized as far as what the zoo was willing to do. So no, they have not incorporated that physically into that document, if that's what your question is.
My question is tangentially, as this has happened, has they, have they, because as I understand it, if they were to do anything in line with their master plan, they have to submit kind of final construction documents, they have to prepare those for the zoo liaison's approval, it, to verify that it's in line with what's currently approved.
Right, right.
Have they taken steps to prepare those in, in the event that this amendment is either tabled or defeated?
This is going to take two of us to answer this. I'll say I have not received any construction documents, and Josh, I think, has more information.
Call on Josh Spencer, Director of Strategic Impact.
As far as, I, I believe they have started the process, though.
Right, so we have not...
What are we discussing now? The first motion, or are we just discussing to table?
So...
Should our remarks of voting to table it be to the motion to table, not the...
Yes.
That's a good point. We need to vote on the motion.
Under Robert's rules, we are talking about and debating the motion to table. A debate on the motion to table indefinitely can go into the main question. So yes, we can talk about the impact of the, the motion to table.
So to answer that question, we have not received the formal application for that, that next step, but the zoo board has communicated to the county that it was their intention they would start that in January, and I, and I believe that has started. Since the first phase of that would look very similar under, under both plans, but the, the future phases, it would look very different. So no, we haven't received the formal request, but we understand that that has started.
So they have, they've begun to prepare a, a version of 2015, and if this motion to table proceeds, that's how they will proceed?
That's what they've communicated our, their intention to us, yes.
Have we gotten any insight from facilities or from our conversations that if they have to proceed, if they choose to proceed with the 2015 plan and bypass this amendment or rescind it, what version they will attempt, what combination of a version? Because as I understand it, those versions have, there's three different iterations that they can combine and, and, and put together, and several of them encroach upon the 150-foot buffer, but one of, the one that doesn't is also one that involves the admin building potentially being demolished. Do we have any direction on what version of 2015 they would proceed with?
So we know, we know what the section of Phase 1 would be, which would be just to the south of the pavilion building. We did ask, and, and it wasn't the, the immediate intention to, that the pavilion building would be under jeopardy, there's a zoo school there, and there's an ongoing partnership. But they would be, they would have the authority to do the rest of the plan at a time, and they, and they do plan on whatever they are going to do, they do plan on executing that over the next two years. So we know whatever that is going to look like will be done by the end of 2026, essentially.
And I guess my last question then is, in those conversations, has it been, is it our understanding that if this is prolonged past January, that the zoo will elect to, essentially with, take back this proposed amendment and just proceed with the 2015 plan?
They have very strongly communicated that would be their intention, yes.
Thank you. To Commissioner Ponstein's point, I do think we should attempt, where possible, to keep the discussion right now toward the impact of postponing the, the amendment to the resolution. So I will call on Commissioner LeGrand.
Thank you, Temporary Chair. I guess I do have a question. First of all, I'm very thankful to everyone from the, from Save John Ball Park who's come out and, and shared with us and, and written and, and shared your opinions. It's been great to hear from you, and I'm thankful to the administration for addressing these concerns and, and listening. Can someone, Al, someone, tell me, how, how strictly does a master plan govern? Like, how is it, I've, I've heard it suggested that it's a, it's more general guidance, and then, but doing these amendments makes it sound like it's very, very specific. So how much leeway does the zoo have? How much permission do they have to ask?
I'll defer to Linda on that one.
The way the master plan is discussed in the lease and operating agreement is more general. It is not construction documents, so we're not talking about actual meets and bounds of where a building or where an exhibit or where asphalt would actually start and stop, you know, in a survey context, things along those lines. It gives guidance, it is a plan, it's not construction documents. So the final construction documents would have to relate to the plan, they would have to show what's on the plan, because that's what this board approved back in 15. They couldn't wholesale change something and put a great big exhibit, you know, down next to, to the driveway, because that wasn't in the plan. The plan from 15 does show parking in this area. So that, you miss, you mesh that with the, the construction and the onsite and things like that, but it's not, it is not construction documents. Okay, thank you. I will save the rest of my comments if you promise to call on me later.
I do. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Merchant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pursuant to standing Rule 1.9, and after consultation with Corporate Counsel, I will be abstaining from this vote and future votes on the John Ball Zoo master plan. Thank you.
Thank you, so noted. Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. I apologize ahead of time if this sounds like a repeat or a rephrasing of the question that I asked right before I made this motion, but just to be clear for the board and for the public who may be listening, and who is listening, if this motion to table would succeed, the zoo is not obligated to move forward with development and with the 2015 plan. Am I correct? They can, and they have the ability to, but they could also choose to essentially postpone any development while, for example, another town hall is made or while further discussions are made.
While the zoo has the ability to do so, I believe the zoo's position and the zoo board's position would be that they have a de facto obligation to meet their further needs, but they would not have an obligation under the operating agreement to move forward with anything outside of the 2015 plan.
Okay, so in other words, if this motion were to succeed, and if they chose to move forward, that's completely up to them. We're not telling them to. They could choose to just keep moving forward.
The 2015 plan is approved, and they can do anything that's reasonably underneath the 2015 plan.
And they could also choose to pause further development.
I believe that would be within their...
Within their range of authority.
Range of authority, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. Others? Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. To Commissioner Diaz's point, are you saying that if we do table this, there does give us, we've got a year before they finish for the, the next plan, what, does that give us time, or the zoo time, to engage back with the community and make some changes? Because, I was going to say it. I get so tired of government saying this is the way it has to go, when we sit up here every week and make amendments, when we sit up here every week and do resolutions, when we sit up here every week and do, you know, make plans. Plans can change. So are we playing chicken? Are we saying that this is the way, if you don't, if you don't go with us, if you, you don't vote the way we want you to vote, then we're going to go back to this 15 that we know we don't want? Or is the zoo willing to listen to the community? Because these, the people that came out here, I wish we have more people like the people that come out here for the zoo. They are not telling us what to do, they're asking for their community. They're meeting with the officials behind the scenes, they're doing all the things that government partners do, partners in the community, people who are part of the community that want things done the way that they need to for their community, for our community. So I just, I appreciate every last one of them coming out, making their voice known. I appreciate them reaching back out to the zoo, out to our administration, and as Commissioner LeGrand said, I appreciate them listening as well. But what I just get so tired of is the minutia of government saying we have to do things a certain way when we know darn well that there can be changes. So what changes is the zoo willing to do or listen to as we go forward? And I don't want to hear that we have to do the 2015 when we know we don't have to do the 2015 with amendments, changes, and resolutions.
Thank you, Commissioner Sparks. Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you, Commissioner Sparks, for those comments. They've really enlightened me, you know, and informed me even more than I've been. I almost wish that we had discussed the regular resolution more, in that we were sent new maps about 48 hours ago after action, you know, to delineate, better delineate changes being made, and, and they, and they raise a whole lot of more questions about what the 2023 plan is, and, and then, of course, we have a lot of questions about how far the 2015, the 2023 plan and the versus the 2015 plan. I think on both plans, there are questions to be asked, and perhaps tabling is appropriate because we, you know, what is the sequencing? What is, what is the plan? What exactly, exactly do these new maps that we've received mean in terms of the development? So tabling is probably a really good choice at this point, and there's been a really good discussion going on between our administration and the Save John Ball Park people. They're really feeling heard, that the community itself is beginning to really feel heard by this discussion. So I will support tabling at this point, but I, you know, but I support it with also wanting to know what, you know, what is going to happen? I mean, to say that, that the 2015 plan will go forward, it's like, what portions of the 2015 plan will be going forward?
Thank you, Commissioner. I think it's worth noting that the, that it, that it was included in the agenda packet. I wonder if Al or Josh might be able to briefly walk through some of those changes to the latest iteration of the amended plan? I know some of the pieces that are in there were worked out in communication with neighborhood and that sort of thing, so please, Josh.
Yeah, cer, is it on? Can you hear me? So certainly, so, and I would just say, I think, Al and I, we've enjoyed our conversations with the neighborhood and, 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 and we appreciated the, the, the information, the share of information, and this has been shared with the zoo. And they, and, and in your packet, actually, let's let me reference the page so you can, is my, well, I guess it's the first page, is, is the memorandum that I drafted that has these, and, and some, some of them were not changes, they're just more clarifying what was in the plan, and some of them were actual changes. So the first one was committed... So, um, the first one was committed, commitment to save as many trees as possible. As Linda stated, the master plan is not a construction document. So, uh, to the extent that that shows like these trees are removed and these ones are not, um, it's not, that's not the guiding document. It's the construction documents that are submitted next. So they did a tree survey in 2017 and that will inform those construction plans. And that is a shared value, um, from the zoo. Um, maintaining access to the trails in the hillside. So that's another committed community amenity, uh, that's, that's widely used and that was never removed. But again, a clarification that that access will remain, uh, under the amendment. The new drain tile and the green space directly west of John Ball Park Drive. And so I understand, I have experienced this personally, but that area gets very wet at certain times of the year. So better drainage would allow for that green space, uh, that's being preserved to, um, to be used more year round. Removing new paved paths through the green space, um, that there were, there were some, uh, trail, uh, paved trails that bisected the green space. And what we heard from the neighborhood is we would like more contiguous green space and there are existing sidewalks and along many of those areas. So why not use the sidewalks and not, you know, break up the green space? And so, uh, the zoo has, has removed the, the new paved areas. Now, uh, there are actually new paved paths that go up and around the parking and still connect to the, to the west and eventually to our trail network that goes all the way to Millennium. Um, so that is still in the plan and that those are new paths. So that, that connection remains in the plan. Um, the multi-use court, so that was another, uh, that was another thing that we did hear is that, that again breaks up the contiguous green space. Um, you'll note that the, that the current basketball court, um, that would, uh, they projected that would actually be in, in the roadway. Um, so that would be moved and, and replicated, uh, in the new plan as well. The retaining wall, so, uh, the, the original plan, uh, cut into the hill more so than the one you're looking at now. And there was a concern and, and it would have required removal of more trees to implement. And so the neighborhood asked, or the neighborhood group asked, could we move that parking further away from the hill and, and not cut into the hill as much? Um, and the zoo did do that, even though it does reduce the overall acreage of paved space and, and, and remove some parking spaces from the plan. They were willing to do that and so they had made that change. Um, the other thing, and this is again, as stated, and I think it was important to include this, is in your plan, there is a space where there would be, there could be a future parking garage. And so as there comes a need for more parking area, you know, could we go up instead of out further? And so they do, at, at that future time, and it's hard to tell when that will, will happen and, and what the conditions will be and the tenants will be and those things. When that does happen, that they're willing to look at, you know, reducing the acreage of paved space as that happens. Again, that's, that there's a lot of factors and so we, we can't get into a lot of detail. We, and we did have that conversation. But, uh, but we just don't know when that's going to happen. So they were willing to, to kind of state that plainly, that that would be something that, that they would consider at that time. So that is the, all the changes that, that, that happened since November. And, and they turned that around in a couple of weeks, um, which was pretty impressive when you think about engineering firms and what they can do. So.
Thank you, Josh. And then just an, I had a just quick follow-up question to you. Um, it's my understanding that the, there's a section in the operating agreement that goes into great detail of the process of approving construction plans, correct? And that's, there's checks and balances through the county and the zoo and that sort of thing.
Yep, and absolutely. So there's consent criteria and alignment with the master plan is one of what, six or so consent criteria? So there's the quality of construction. Does, do they have the, the proper insurance and, and do they have the funding plan in place to complete the project? So there's a lot of factors that are reviewed as those construction plans are submitted. Um, so it's not cart launch, you know, uh, have at it. It is, there's a process where those plans are submitted to the county and administrator as a liaison has the authority to approve those uh, and determine whether those consent criteria are met.
Thank you. Uh, on the motion to postpone indefinitely, I call on Commissioner Ponstein for further, did you want to raise a point of order?
No, I, I just.
You thought I was calling the question? I'm not. I'm calling on Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Green. So I hear a lot of commissioners talk that somehow, uh, we have a say in this. We gave up that right when we decided that we didn't want to run the zoo and we came up with this operating agreement. The same way when we said that we didn't want to run the road commission. We gave that away. We gave away our mental health voice and we said we wanted someone else to do that. And we'll even do it with the airport. You know, the biggest, you know, the toughest part is that everyone's pointing towards this strategic plan as that it's gotta be exactly what they say it is. And that's not what strategic plans are. Strategic plans are used as a vision and a guidance on what we want it to look like. With, you know, some detail to it, but most of it, it's to apply for grants to the federal government, state of Michigan and other people who require a strategic plan in place and updated in, in this case, every 10 years. You know, the remarks that somehow the zoo is not listening to the public is probably one of the hardest things for me to hear because being on the board of the zoo, they're engaged with the community every single day that that zoo is open and even the days that they're not. And a lot of the attacks are now going against the zoo staff. I mean, sit back a moment and remember the condition of that zoo when it was turned over to the county. I mean, we didn't eliminate that park. The city of Grand Rapids did. And it, and it's, you know, the new term now it's a historic park, which, you know, is a name for it. But when I think of historic places, you know, the last thing that I think about being placed in a historic park is a parking garage. One of the most ugliest things in the world, in cities and every place else. And, and I think, you know, the, the zoo's got the right to go by the two, 2015. And for us to say that they're not listening, that's how we got to here. They heard and saw problems with that plan and wanted to make amendments to make it a better plan, a plan that actually reduced parking spaces. But once again, the attacks are being directed at staff at the zoo and, and, and we should be all embarrassed with that. They've invested over $20 million, most of it in upkeep and, and maintenance and buildings that were crumbled that were given to us by the city of Grand Rapids. And then we kept doing it as a county, didn't keep up with that. And then we rushed to this operating agreement and threw all that responsibility of that deferred maintenance that never occurred that they should figure it out. And you know what the marching orders was? There, you know, there wasn't going to be funding from the county or the city for everything that they've neglected. They were told, you've got to grow the zoo and you've got to find revenues in order to make those improvements if we're going to do that. And I think they have gone out of their way to do that. But at the end, I mean, if that's, if that was our marching orders, the only way you could increase revenue is increase the people that come to the zoo. And they've done it successfully by making this a zoo that we all can be proud of. I'm old enough and I visited when it was just, it was, it was like a nightmare. It was everything Pete has says is wrong with zoo. I mean, we're an accredited zoo that's respected across the country. We participate in, in, you know, advancing what they stand for, the environment, conservation, all of that. Take time to go to the zoo school, see the impact that that zoo has outside our boundaries, in our schools, with our students. And what a great place to take a family. Talk about places to walk. I think that zoo is an incredible place just to walk through on its own. But you know, this, this, this whole nitpicking and, and attacks that somehow they're, they want to cut down all the trees? You know, I've never heard of that. That's never come up at any zoo meeting. Of course, parking, you know, what one will call a road may just be a gateway that's designed by an engineer on how this parking can be connected safely and there are no threats to people being run over by a car or, or, or displacing wildlife and any of that. But you know, you know, it's gotta end, you know? They've got the right. We gave it to them. We approved that 2015 plan to do whatever they want. The zoo is trying their best under these circumstances. They've talked with, you know, the, uh, people in the area. They've talked to the administration and when it got too toxic, I want to thank the administration for meeting with the local groups and the zoo and trying to come up, what can we do? But, you know, once again, I, I, I really have a hard time on the attacks that are being flung at, at people at that zoo after you can just, just go there and then look at pictures of what it used to look like. And then come to a conclusion of, are these the bad guys that we're painting them to be? It's not. And they've got one of the best boards that I've ever sat on. Every walk of life is represented on that board. And, uh, a lot of people with technical expertise. And those experts are going to be the ones that are going to do those construction documents. Why don't we have them here today? They're very expensive. I mean, construction documents like that may be 50, 60, 100,000. And we're just going to present that here, then have us nitpick that we don't like that man, the hole there. I think there's too many parking spaces here and then have them change it again, then have the engineers, you know, rebuild. It's gotta stop. I mean, we gave the right to run the zoo to them.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, is there further discussion on the motion to postpone indefinitely? Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. I'll start by just saying that, um, the reason I do want us to understand the full weight of the motion to table as it regards to the master planning process is because this body elected prior to my service here and prior to the service of most of us to spin off authority to, um, uh, to the zoo and to execute the operating agreement. This is the only time we get input in this process and we will be held accountable for the decisions made. And before I make any determination on to table or to vote on the, on the main motion, should the tape, motion table fail, I want to know what our powers are. And so my first question in, uh, in this round is, as, um, you know, we've talked about timeline. Regardless of what is approved, have they provided a timeline for when the final actions of whatever they have currently approved is accomplished? Is it the end of 2025? Is it 2026? When, whether the 23 amendment is adopted, whether 15 remains, have they given any timeline for when they will, uh, final, uh, when they will be done with, um, parking, uh, construction?
We did ask, although it's not required under the master plan, uh, and it is their intention to complete whatever plan they're moving forward with in two years, which starts in 2024. Um, so by the end of 2026, it is again, is pending on funding and those kinds of things. But it is their intention to have that parking plan in place by, within two years.
And, you know, it's been suggested, maybe even intimated, that because the master planning process is coming up next year, that this could fold into something like that. And I, you know, I appreciate that question. But as I understand it, a master planning process does not halt them from proceeding with whatever's been previously approved. And the only power we have on our, on this side of the, uh, of the partnership is evaluation of what's been produced to ensure that it's in line with what's been approved previously.
That is correct.
And then on top of that, as I also understand it, in the operating agreement, um, in the event a master plan is not adopted, a new master plan is not adopted, the old one remains the same.
That's also correct.
And then lastly, when I look at these two, uh, options, as it's been presented, the 2015 amendment and the 2023 amendment, uh, or the 2015 plan and the 2023 amendment, overall pavement, um, do we have a figure for acreage of overall pavement in 2015, including roadways and overall pavement of the 23 amendment, including roadways?
Yeah, I'll have to use my cheat sheet, uh, and I did put these in, uh, ahead of time. So, uh, the, in the current plan, there are 12 acres of total, uh, pavement, uh, just over 11 acres of that is parking. Under this, uh, current amendment, it's 10 and a half acres of total pavement, including parking and, and the new roadway. So it's one and a half acres less. I'll say that was one, one acre less in the previous version of the amendment, but because they reduced the size of the pavement to not cut into the, to the hill, that did reduce the overall paved space.
So, you know, as I think about this, um, I, I echo the sentiments that I would certainly want to hold off on a final conclusion to try to reach some solution that is more broadly accepted. But I also understand the role that we have and the limitations of the role that we have when this body decided to spin off authority of the zoo towards the public-private partnership. And I personally, as I see it, we have one op, we, we, given the fact that we've not only structurally been told that in the absence of this amendment, 2015 is the only thing on the books and that they've communicated without this amendment, they will proceed with that. And I have before us one amendment that paves less and this is the only decision point we get to make as a body. I, I just, I, I hate the fact that this is the dilemma that we're faced with. And I, I think means, uh, a longer discussion on how we govern these public-private partnerships. But if that is truly what's before us, I don't want to give up the opportunity to limit the amount of pavement that can be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wooden. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair Green. Um, there's a couple of things I, uh, and I, you know, we've kind of gotten outside a little bit the scope here of this motion to table. But I want to take this opportunity, um, to talk about, there's an old saying, says you can't have your cake and eat it too. And what we're talking about here is we can't have green space in a viable park. And I, I just don't think that's accurate. We do have a viable park, a thriving park. Um, and we also have a history of spending millions of dollars over the last 14 years I've been here, 15 years, on parkland. A lot of the parkland that we bought doesn't have any amenities to it. It's just simply green space. And why is that important? Well, the public said we need green space and we've been fulfilling that obligation. I'd say we've gone over the top in our pursuit of some of this green space because of the costs and so forth, but the public spoke. So in this case, we have green space that all of a sudden we don't think is viable or we don't think is valuable. And is it because it's a smaller chunk of green space? I think our park right now, that's the best possible use of that footprint, that that land is exactly how it is right now. Now, we can tweak it. We can figure out some things, how to maybe accommodate some of the more critical concerns about maybe safety. But I like personally, as a taxpayer and as someone that goes to that park, grandchildren and so forth, I like the park the way it is. And I know a lot of the residents like it. They want their green space. Green space is important. It should be important, no matter what part of the city the green space is located. For some reason, I don't know, northwest side, all of a sudden, it's really not that important for the west side or to have green space. They can travel and find some. But again, it, it, this issue of trying to fit a round peg into a square hole just because of some visionary or somebody wanting to compete with bigger zoos, thinking that Grand Rapids needs to be bigger than what, uh, it's perceived to be. It needs to be more of a cool town. I think we got to get away from that. Let's get back to the giant little city that we proclaim to be with a lot of amenities, including a very nice zoo, without going over the top. I fully support the folks here that have been trying to, um, save the zoo from that type of development. But I think they're open to some tweaks and that's what I'd be open to too. And I appreciate the time to talk. I was going to save this for the original resolution, but I appreciate the time on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Antor. Is there any further discussion on the motion to postpone indefinitely? Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you. I, on the motion to postpone, um, I, I recognize that the Finance and Physical Resources YouTube channel is probably not everybody's, uh, favorite viewing, um, but.
Speak for yourself.
So you may have, you may have missed some of the process and I'm, I may recall some of the, the dates incorrectly here. But as I remember, um, we, we presented this 2023 amended plan, maybe September timeframe. And, uh, if I recall from the presentation properly, the planning that went into that, which, which the zoo leadership is saying, looked at the 2015 plan, starting in, I think, 2018, maybe even 2017 and said, you know, I think we can do a better job, you know, from their perspective, a better job of kind of accommodating all of these interests. And the pandemic kind of, you know, slowed down that timeline a little bit, but so many, many years we're putting in advance of trying to come up with like a, a compromise plan. Um, and the, we were presented it in, uh, September and, uh, considered at the time, based on public comment, that it would be good to postpone, um, comment, that it would be good to postpone. And as I recall, we, at that time, postponed to a date certain, which was in November, if I remember right, so that there was more time for continued, you know, community interaction and whatnot. And I supported that motion to postpone, and then in November, we spent additional, many hours on the question. And at that point, there was a motion to postpone, which at the time, I supported that motion to postpone because I thought it was imperative that the, you know, the deep discussion not be made only with half of this commission, that we were able to get to the point we are now where we have the full board able to consider this and debate and deliberate. And I thought that was important, so I supported that motion to postpone indefinitely. I do not, at this point, support a motion to postpone again. I think, you know, the ramifications of that have been discussed, I won't touch on that again. But to suggest that somehow the process is rushed, a planning process that's, you know, more than half decade in the making and of which we've deliberated on for closing in on, I don't know, four or five months now, to me, that is not rushed, and I am opposed to the motion to postpone.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Is there any further discussion on the motion to postpone? Okay, seeing none, I will just add that I agree with what Commissioner Coleman stated. I think we should tackle this issue today, and we've spent a great deal of time debating it, considering it, having meetings with various stakeholders, the county playing a liaison in some of those instances between the zoo and the neighborhood. So I think it's appropriate that we take this up today. I'm not sure if this is a voice vote, I would like to request a roll call. So Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on the question to postpone indefinitely?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to postpone indefinitely, Resolution 9. Commissioners Wooden.
No.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Ponstein.
No.
Pakla.
No.
Oliver King.
Merchant.
Stane.
McLeod.
No.
Legrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
No.
Hildenbrand.
No.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Green.
No.
Commissioners Diaz.
Yes.
DeBoer.
No.
Burl.
No.
Boujack.
Breevy.
No.
Baker.
No.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
I'm staying.
Mr. Chair, you have five yays, 12 nays. The motion to postpone Resolution 9 indefinitely fails.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We return to discussion on the main motion. I previously had a couple of folks that wanted to speak. Commissioner Hennessy, would you like to speak again?
This will be the first time, but I don't really mean to speak right now. I would really, we did receive new maps as part of this packet on, you know, Tuesday afternoon, early evening, and it does delineate, has, you know, marked in black lines now some of the changes. And I think some of these changes are new and have not been explained. I would really like someone to walk us through exactly what 2023 does mean.
It was my understanding that Josh Spencer did that earlier, but if you need further clarification, Commissioner?
Yes, absolutely. Because a lot of, the map has changed since we talked about it even Tuesday morning.
Okay. Josh, thank you.
Sure, absolutely. So let's just walk through them. How about we just do that, through the packet? And so, starting on, sorry, we'll go, we'll start on page eight. So this is the area that I mentioned that was just west of John Ball Park Drive. So the area between that and the proposed new roadway is the area that would be re-tiled and so the drainage could be improved, so that could be used better throughout the year. There was also, in the previous plan, a network of paved trails in that space that were removed. So that's, that image shows that, those changes. On page nine, this shows, so if you look at the west edge of that parking area, in the previous plan, that went further into the hillside. So the parking area has been moved farther, or the line has moved farther east, and that did reduce the overall square footage of pavement, but that meant that a shorter retaining wall and preserving more trees along the hillside. It also references the entrances of the hillside trails that will be maintained as part of this plan as well.
Yeah, that's fine. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Following the line along the hillside?
Yep.
Commissioner, can you turn your mic on, please?
Following the line along the hillside, there are a couple of places now marked off with white, and there's some double black lines as you move over towards behind the pavilion. And does that, and the wall that's there beyond the retaining wall, that road there, is that also expanding or what does that mean? I don't understand the lines, I'm just asking for clarification.
Yeah, those have not expanded, they just moved further east. So that includes a walkway and a roadway that will allow traffic to move around the parking areas. And you can see that will be kind of the main drop-off where you can see some darker lines there. So I think you know where the current kind of throughway is, so that'll be, that'll move farther to the south of the pavilion. So that's both roadway for traffic and walking paths.
So the black and the white that's along the roadway, there's a series of lines that's for drop-off?
Yeah, that's where the drop-off will be, so you think about where the school buses currently go, though all the traffic will be directed over to the south of the pavilion.
Yep, okay.
So on the next page, that page just simply shows there was a path that kind of bisected that green space to the east side of the property, and that trail has been removed. And there is sidewalks that exist along the roadway that can be used to connect over. Preserving the playgrounds, so just notes where those playgrounds are that will be preserved. If you remember, the area that's just east of the pavilion building, there was more concrete proposed there, and that has been cut back to allow for that one playground to the, furthest to the north, to be preserved. And then this is more of a general statement, but just stating that it is a value of theirs to preserve as many trees as possible, and they did do that tree survey that will inform future construction documents. So that is the extent of changes. Other than, I'll just note one more that I noted in the memo, is that that area that's along the hillside is slated for a future parking garage if and when, you know, the zoo decides to do that and funding is in place. That provides more capacity to expand up rather than out for future growth.
Thank you, Josh. Commissioner, you have other questions?
I have, I have one more map here that, I have one more map here where, as you...
What page are you looking at?
It says 16.
Sure.
The copy I have says 16.
Mm-hmm. Yep, those are just close-ups of the previous maps, yeah.
Okay. And that's what I'm looking at for the definition that it provides.
Sure.
And there are a series of black marks around the pavilion, including attached to the pavilion itself that indicate that there will be changes. And then there's a broken line circle that I actually cannot, it's not such that I can even read what it says within that circle, so I'm just asking for clarification. But I'm curious as to how much that is reflected on that particular map, is it, is concerns directly on the pavilion or around it, what that is. And then that circular area that I can't read.
Yep.
And it also delineates a white pathway between the two parking lots that still goes out to park and ballpark.
Yep.
And I don't, I don't understand what that is as well. That's a white road-like type thing.
Sure. So the lines that you reference around the pavilion, those are additional walking paths, so that's an improved, you know, pedestrian traffic around the pavilion now that you can think of that, that'll be a new drop-off, so a lot of traffic will be directed there where there currently isn't a lot of traffic that goes to the west, I'm sorry, to the south of the pavilion. The small circle there, I know is bike parking. I, oh, because I do have to get just clarification from Zoo Staff on the larger dotted circle, because I'm having trouble recalling what that is myself. But that pathway that you reference, they highlighted that as, when the neighborhood was asking, well, how will we get to the hillside trails? That is another pathway, a safe crossing across the drive that connects directly to the sidewalk that's on the street there, such as highlighting where the public will be able to access the trails that are beyond the roadway there.
Okay, so the roadway itself that exists now will be taken out? The exit from the parking lot onto park will be taken out?
Yeah, it's overlaid, so it's confusing, but the thought is that, the plan is that all those roadways will be removed and as well as the exit into the neighborhood as well.
Okay.
But let me just clarify on your other question really quick. Okay, I didn't want to misspeak. So that is actually a future picnic space and public area too, so that's closer to the zoo entrance, so that's more of a public space.
Okay, let me ask about the white, it looks like it's a trail, but is it a trail that is coming down there? And it crosses over what is a road right now? So what happens with that road?
Those roads will be...
Hopefully it'll go away.
Those existing roads will be removed, yep. And so that, to make, yep, so that's the pavement that'll be removed and kind of is configured in the overall acreage that I gave you earlier, what more pavement will exist and what will be taken away.
One question too, as we look at all the...
Last question for now, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Just, just questions. What, do you know the time, do you know the timeframe for all this? This is what we've been asking before, and I don't think we, do we know the timeframe? Other than it'll be two years?
So we know the timeline they gave us overall, but that's not something that we've incorporated into our master plan, so that is actually an obligation of the zoo to come up with the funding and propose those projects to the county if and when they can meet all the consent criteria. So that's something that we entrust our partner with the zoo to provide, to do. So they made, they gave us preliminary, you know, timeline of this, but they have the authority to implement any of these throughout the period of the plan. And again, it's dependent on what they determine as a priority, you know, to do first and what they have funding in place to complete.
Okay, no changes to the pavilion?
There is no changes proposed to the pavilion, no, correct. Other than the walking paths surrounding it, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Hennessy. Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. So actually, my first question had already been answered, it was about the roadways, essentially confirming that the, not only the curb cut coming off of Park and John Ball Park Drive, but also the one coming off of, I believe it's Fulton, that's existing that runs to the fountain, and then the other roadway that runs westward from the fountain, those are being removed? Because I'm seeing the walkways kind of in line with where they are?
Correct, yeah. There will be some overlay, but that's, those will be new pathways, and that will turn the fountain area into more of a pedestrian area rather than a drive, yes.
And then, you know, a final procedural question, or what I at least hope is a final procedural question. You know, there's been suggestion and discussion that we approve one portion of this or one component or further amend what's being proposed to us, you know, some discussion of, can we only approve the idea of a parking deck and retain the grass overflow until that funding is acquired? As I understand it, the process, the approval process is not, is bilateral. It is not a hierarchical structure where whatever we approve, the zoo has to execute. They can, it would go back to the zoo and they can decide whether to accept this or not, and again, on the premise that without an amendment, the existing plan still remains.
Right. We don't have a line item veto on the master plan, and Linda can talk to, speak to that too.
When the board approved the existing master plan in 15, that plan has been in place for years and has been relied on by all parties. And so there's nothing we can do to change the 15 master plan. You can't make a motion today to make a change to the 15. And if something like that were to be made, it would not change the impact of 15, because if that type of motion were to pass here today, then whatever those conditions, criteria, changes would be, would have to go back to the zoo board, and they would have the chance to either approve it or reject it. If the zoo board does not agree with those conditions or changes, then it basically is an offer that fails, and what we are left with at that point is the existing 15 in its current state.
So this is all very helpful. I, you know, I first, you know, that concludes my questions, but I do want to share some comments here. You know, I first do want to thank those from the community for everything you've done. Attending this morning, attending countless meetings, conversations I've had with you, conversations you've had with staff, your passion is clear and it deserves the highest level of respect. And, you know, as I've reflected on this issue in the last, these last months, I've recalled the fact that public gathering spaces, ones that are truly free and open to the public, are shrinking across this country. They're shrinking in this community, they're shrinking in communities like ours. And while I do think the zoo has done better than other venues in being more accessible in and of themselves, it's still not the same as a public park. And also may be true that the 1987 sale may have removed the legal or public designation of green space as a park, but it has continued to function as a park since then, and it truly functions as a park. And it also might be true that the county's fiduciary responsibility be primarily to the zoo, and that any park space is secondary to it. But given just how vital public spaces are to our community, I told myself after the last vote to table that I would only vote for a measure like this that includes further paving of green space after understanding, one, fully vetting to my own standard, some of the options that have been suggested by this group, confirming that executing the 2015 plan was more than just a possibility but a certainty if this amendment does not pass, and that the 23 Amendment does pave less green space. And I spent some time between our November meeting and today reviewing some of the suggestions that have been made, namely the shuttle lot, and going beyond what I've been, what's been told by, through the independent study, but actually seeing some of the examples of other zoos in the Midwest that have shuttle lots. Detroit does have a shuttle lot, as does, I believe, Indianapolis. What I came to find myself is, while they have shuttle lot services, they also have far more spots, parking spots on their own site. Detroit has upwards of 2,000, it looks like Indianapolis has around 1,500, both of them have over a million in residents, and their onsite parking needs meet far more of their demands for access on most days, and the shuttle lot in itself is an add-on. Whereas given the current demands of the zoo as it is now, not facilitating their growth, but just what's currently their demands, additional parking purely through a shuttle would be, in my view, too difficult and would lead to a reduction in service. And for me, it's never been about approving something that helps them get to a higher number, but just have something that reflects the current reality. And I certainly, my, I appreciate the suggestion that we exclusively approve the creation of a deck, since that seems to be what everyone wants, and allowing the overflow. But as I continue to hear, the process is bilateral, and the decision made by this body over 10 years ago to spin off authority to the zoo and its board and governed by an operating agreement does mean we are limited in our decision-making power, however frustrating that is. And it comes to the fact that, you know, as we heard this morning, the absence of an approval of this amendment does mean they will proceed with the 2015 Amendment, or 2015 Plan. And there is an opportunity, I see before me an opportunity to approve a version that limits the amount of green space to be paved. And however much it frustrates me, however much it angers me, that that's the two options I have presented to me, I do believe those are the only two options. do believe those are the only two options. Going through this process, it has, to me, indicated we do need an honest discussion about how we govern with our independent authorities, how we govern public-private partnerships, because ultimately, these are decisions that we are accountable to because this is our property. And limiting our decision-making power in some ways is frustrating. I'm inclined to suggest that there are certain decisions that should be made by zoo professionals because I don't know how to run a zoo. But the interaction with how it functions with green space in the surrounding neighborhood seems to me like the most important policy decision that does involve, that does require our involvement. And limiting that right now, the fact that we are currently limiting, limited by our existing policies is frustrating. I also would go as far as to say that while approval of this amendment may be the last time this body comes before us for quite some time, I personally am not going to let up on urging the zoo, on pushing the zoo to work on a community benefits agreement, to consider ideas on how this community can more broadly be involved in the upkeep, maintenance and responsibility of this zoo or of this park, because it is a treasured green space. And if we are going to lose part of it, we better do our best to protect what is remaining and to make the best use of it so it can remain a public gathering space that people need. So, while I'll be voting for this amendment, I am frustrated by the limitations we have as a body, and I am prepared to continue to work to make the best use of it as we can. Thank you.
Commissioner Legrand, I will say, Commissioner, just one second. We did allow, did allow a little bit of leeway on the discussion of the main motion during debate on the motion to postpone. So, I just ask members to be judicious about their comments. Thank you. Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. I will be very judicious.
Thank you.
John Ball Park, John Ball Zoo is a jewel. It is a jewel in the city, and it's very limited in its space. It is like a jewel in a very tight setting. And I know there's a lot of talent leading the zoo, but they have a little bit of an impossible task trying to grow it in a very limited space. I would like to see future discussions involve the city. I think the city, while does not have ownership interest, has interest in helping alleviate some of these parking concerns. And for what it's worth, I would like the city to get involved in helping create parking off-site or transportation solutions that will help the zoo retain some of this beautiful setting because that park setting, and it does feel historic. You feel it when you're there. It's part of what makes it special. It's part of what makes it so beautiful. And I know you see that as an asset, and I hope you continue to see that as an asset. I have a big question, which is how big are we gonna, how big are we gonna try to get at this site? And how are we going to support that in a sensible way? It is a very beautiful zoo. It is a great attraction. But if the goal is for it to grow exponentially, you know, we voted, the county voted not against, I mean, the decision was made to not move it out to Meyer Gardens, but to keep it there. But the cost of that is that now we're trying to grow it in a very confined space. But the cost of a parking deck certainly is way less than the cost of moving the zoo out to a suburban space where it can sprawl out. So, let us please consider those costs going forward, and let's plan for what our end game is going to be. We don't want infinite growth at that site. The site's not going to support it. But it is, it is just a stunning zoo. It's a beautiful zoo. My personal history goes back to my kids going to zoo school, and they had really deep and meaningful encounters with nature and with the zoo itself there. So, I guess that's it. But I'm just really hoping for, going forward, that we will also, sorry, one more thing, that this possibility of a community liaison group where we have members of the community with officials from the zoo and from the county so that we can avoid some of these sort of crisis situations in the future. And please let's loop in the city so they can be part of our parking solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Diaz for a second.
And you'll be judicious as well. Commissioner Legrand brings up a good point. If I'm not mistaken, the last time this county, the city decided on whether or not to keep the zoo where it currently is was almost 20 years ago. That's a generation ago. I am convinced that if we presented the question to our residents in saying that the zoo has frankly run out of space and that we're about to make another short-term decision, and if we decided to put it somewhere else in the county where the zoo wouldn't have the current limitations that it currently has, I'm pretty sure that would pass. So, with that, I'd like to request a roll call for this vote. Thank you.
Noted. Roll call will be requested. Further comment or questions? Commissioner Hennessy, well, Commissioner, let's, we'll allow for first, first, Commissioner Baker.
The zoo has been very important in my life. My kids went to zoo school.
Yes, please.
But anyway, the zoo has been very, I mean, I spent a lot of time there. The best memories of my kid's childhood was there. I also have friends in the community, in the John Ball community. And I know that if parking was going to replace part of the green space in the neighborhood I live in, in South Heritage Hill, there would be a lot of, there would be other people here. I feel like we have, at this time, we, our role and oversight will end with this vote, but it does not mean that the engagement from the community has to end. And I see two options in front of me. One is to let the 2015 plan proceed, which I've never heard anyone say is the preference. And so, I'll support this amendment and hope that the community engagement continues.
Thank you, Commissioner. Further first comments? Commissioner Antor, you are a first on this part. Thank you.
Go ahead. Keep it really short. Just a comment. Commissioner Ponstein and myself, oftentimes after our meetings, we'll shoot over to the Choo Choo Grill, which is probably the smallest restaurant in the state of Michigan with maybe two tables and a few bar stools in there. We go there all the time and we love it. It's definitely a jewel in that neighborhood. But we go there because it's the smallest restaurant in Michigan, and the service is great. And it's just, it is what it is. And all kinds of people go there. So, just because it's something maybe bigger, it doesn't make it better. So, that's just the really kind of an oddball point. Roll your eyes, but it is what it is.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else for a first comment? If not, I will recognize Commissioner Hennessy for a second.
Thank you. You know, over the last weeks and months, people are coming up to my husband and to me and just telling us all of their memories of John Ball Park. I mean, I have, I have heard about the old, people old enough who used to use the old swimming pool. I've heard about the golf course that existed on the park. I think that was where the park, the existing parking lot is now. I've heard about sledding on the hills, walking up the trails some years ago. I was with Peter Carlberg, and we were at an event, and he just sort of wanders around and still finds the old trails that exist in the woods. And, you know, you just, you hear all of the stories. Yesterday, I had lunch with someone who told me, told me that he chose his very special place in Grand Rapids to propose to his wife. And of course, it was John Ball Park. And so, it's just, but it's tied to the past, but it's tied to the present in that we still go to, you know, like Matia said, you look at the trails, whether it be the animal prints or the people prints or the ski prints, that people are still using this park all the time. It's a part of our past. It's a part of our present. And hopefully, hopefully, it'll be a part of our future. I feel like the commissioner who's overseeing the demise of the park. But I will say too that, and this is veering off a little bit, I really have been disappointed in many aspects of the communication. And then I feel like it was like to present plans to the community rather than to really get the community's input. The one, the one that really was successful was the, and it really wasn't in the master plan. It's not within the 150 feet, but it ended up just getting broad support was when the playground was constructed there. That is across from Sacred Heart. Sacred Heart really contributed handily to the, its construction. But you look at that playground, the night they did that, that interaction, children came in and they had, there were all kinds of natural things, leaves, sticks, all kinds of things. They made up what they wanted to see in a park. They drew pictures. There was a pizza party. They were there with their families. It was a real, and there were maps on the wall. That was an engagement. And right now, I'm, this today, I will be on my third engagement on the soccer stadium. And it's again, a really interesting process because they're coming into the community. They came to the John Ball area neighbors and presented at the annual meeting. They were last week at the West Fulton Business Association. Today, they're bringing themselves into the Stockbridge Business Association. And we're, and they're talking to people. You know, there's going to be community impact. They're talking about that. They're talking and are fully prepared to list what they consider to be the community benefits of it. I regard the engagement that's going on with the soccer stadium to be more effective and to be, you know, and not everybody's going to like that either. It'll be controversial at every point. But I really feel as though this is my third engagement with them in two weeks where they're, they're out into the community. And I just have to make note of that fact. And I will praise the county for stepping in and being the intermediary to work with the Save John Ball Park neighbors, the people who live immediately around the park. And they've had good discussions. It's been very, very productive. But I would, I would, I'm going to vote no because I would really like to see this, that there be a standard type of liaison type program set up between the neighbors and the zoo, maybe including the county. So far, the zoo's been sort of outside the discussions. It's been between the neighbors and the county. And I think that there needs to be, you know, this needs to be standardized, to have a conversation that is outgoing and not with, you know, 5,000 people or 18,000 people, but just with these people who are immediately affected and live there. This is a really different situation and that the neighborhood immediately surrounds this park. And it definitely has a different impact than if you're talking about, you know, Millennium Park or something like that. This is a neighborhood that, that's existed there for itself for 100 years in many cases with these homes there. So, I hope that actually whatever happens today, I'm going to vote no, but whatever happens, I hope it begins a process of engagement and that it can continue. And, you know, we've seen master plans and the implementation of them change over time. You know, let's, you know, let's not pave this over as to the extent we have. I hope that other, other ways will emerge, that you don't have to take this paving. And I really don't believe that 2015 is any worse than 2023, and the roadway on 2023 absolutely is a divider. It's just, and I'm not sure that it even is safe. So, I will let it go at that. But I will, I will vote no because I think there's more work to be done.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think it'd be nice to give Commissioner Hennessy the last word before. I have a few words too. But if there's any other discussion, I will call on you for a second or a first. Commissioner Sparks? Okay, great. Okay. Thank you. Seeing no more discussion, I've got a few just comments of my own. I also would like to thank the neighbors, J-Band, John Ball Park, Save John Ball Park Group. I had a chance to meet with some of you guys, and I think everybody, all of us have communicated with you by email. I can just really appreciate the passion that you have for your community. As much as sometimes we find ourselves at odds on some of these issues, I'm always encouraged when people enter the arena and become part of the conversation. And I hope that that will continue, that the advocacy will continue. And I'd also, believe it or not, I'd like to thank Commissioner Hennessy. I know, I know you've, you've, at times been a thorn in the side on this issue. However, I also admire that you are willing to stand up for your district and represent your constituents. And I appreciate that. So, I think we all know the zoo is a tremendous community asset. We all go there to be educated. We can be enriched by the wonder of creation. So many of us find it near and dear. But it's important to remember that the zoo serves the entire community. The county took custody of the asset a long time ago, and our goal was to ensure that we had the opportunity to have it live on and improve the quality of life for every resident of the county. That's why the county saw it fitting for the county to take it over, not the city, not some other entity. That's why it's appropriate that it lives there because it is a regional, it is a regional entity. It serves everyone who lives here. In fact, their taxpayers all across the county through the millage support the zoo and pay tax dollars to support the zoo and the museum. And on this commission, we have a responsibility to serve the entire community. We have to ensure the viability of the zoo so that it continue to serve, it can continue to serve everyone. And that absolutely means people that live in the neighborhood around the zoo. But it also means our neighbors and our friends that live in Wyoming and in Cedar Springs and inbound township and in Caledonia and in Lowell. And in order to effectively serve those residents and those needs, the zoo has to be able to adapt and grow. And in fact, I learned this week that it's, it's part of the zoo's contractual obligation with the county to adapt and grow. It has to grow so that it can continue to serve everyone in this community. So, it doesn't mean that in service of, you know, one, we throw others under the bus. I want to continue that, to say that we've, we want to keep that conversation going with the neighbors regardless of the outcome of today. Personally, I'd like to see us continuing the conversations. Commissioner Wooden mentioned some of them regarding how can we protect green space when we get to a point where we may be able to consolidate into fewer structures and that sort of thing. I think that would be a really valid conversation to keep going. I think we have to have a continued conversation about community engagement in some kind of a way that residents know that they have a place that they can come and be heard and have a dialogue. Candidly, we have to do a better job of that across the board. We're getting better at it as a community, but there's a lot of room for improvement. We have to find better ways for people of all stripes across the entire county to be better engaged. So, I think that's a goal that we all need to continue to work toward. But again, I wanted to, I wanted to thank all the commissioners that have put in work on this. I wanted to thank the zoo staff and the county staff. I want to thank the neighbors, everybody. This has been a bit of a rock and a hard place situation for all of us, but I appreciate the willingness to come to the table, and I hope we'll continue to do that. With that, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution, Resolution 9, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
No.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Merchant.
Same.
McLeod.
No.
Legrand.
No.
Coleman.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
No.
Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Diaz.
No.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Boujack.
Brevi. Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Antor.
No.
Mr. Chair.
Abstain.
Yep. Chair Green, you have 11 nays, six nays, two abstentions. The motion passes. Resolution 9 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Yeah. While I still have the gavel here, I'm going to suggest that we take a, let's call it a eight-minute recess. We'll reconvene.
Wait, wait, wait.
Yeah.
Can I get a lighter in there?
We'll reconvene at 10:50 a.m. Thank you.
All right. I will reconvene the Board of Commissioners after our short recess. Thank my vice chair for warming up the crowd. Thank you. Now, let's move on to Item 8B, and I will call on Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 10 of today's date, the Materials Management Plan Notice of Intent coming to us from the Department of Public Works.
Is there support? Supported by, I think Commissioner Pakla put his hand up. That was a support and endorsement. So, any questions or comments on this motion? I see none. This is a roll call. Mr., sorry, is Lisa coming back or are you on?
She is. But I can do this one.
All right. On the passage of Resolution Number 10, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Teal. Sparks.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King. Merchant.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Hen, Hildenbrand.
It's not so easy, is it?
Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Diaz.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Antor.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yeas, zero nays. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll move to item number 8C, and I will call on Commissioner Hildenbrand. I will call on Commissioner Hildenbrand.
I.
Hit those glasses.
No? All right.
Yeah? Am I up?
You're up.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move Resolution 11 of today's date, labor agreement for the Police Officers Labor Council brought to us by Human Resources.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Commissioner Antor. Comments or questions? I do not see any comments or questions. This is a roll call. Now, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 11, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
LaGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Diaz.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 11 is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to item 8D, and I will call on Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 12 of today's date, the labor agreement for the Kent County Deputy Sheriff's Association coming to us from Human Resources.
Is there support?
Support.
Commissioner Burl? Comments or questions? I see none. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 13, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
LaGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Diaz.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 12 is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to item 8E, and I will call on Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. It is my pleasure to move adoption of Resolution 13 of today's date, a motion, a resolution to approve a five-year labor agreement between Kent County and the United Auto Workers.
Is there support for that? Mr. Pakla supports it. Any questions or comments? I see none. It is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 13, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
LaGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Diaz.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution Lucky Number 13 is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to item 8F, and I will call on Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 14, the 2024 Remuneration Grant, coming from the Department of Equalization.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Hildenbrand? Questions or comments? I see none. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 14, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
LaGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Diaz.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution Lucky Number 13 is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to item 8E, and I will call on Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. It is my pleasure to move adoption of Resolution 13 of today's date, a motion, a resolution to approve a five-year labor agreement between Kent County and the United Auto Workers.
Is there support for that? Mr. Pakla supports it. Any questions or comments? I see none. It is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 13, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
LaGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Diaz.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 15 is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to item 8H, and I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 16 of today's date, appropriate donated funds to support the collaborative task force focused on combating human trafficking from the Sheriff's Department.
Thank you. It was supported by Commissioner Teal. Before we take conversation on this, is the sheriff is here, our sheriff, Michelle LaJoy Young. If you have anything to say about this before we proceed.
And I know this has been a very long meeting, so I apologize for adding more time, but I thought this is such an important occasion, we really can't go by having this conversation. This marks our two-year anniversary of having the Human Task, Human Trafficking Task Force at Kent County. This has been a 100% funded thing through a grant from the Justice Department and now donated funds to support this program. I want to introduce now Captain Jason Richards. He's now been promoted. He is who was the flagship leader of our program here at the Sheriff's Office. He's worked so tirelessly to get this program up and functioning. And he's actually being recognized by Sacred Hearts as Law Enforcement Officer of the Year tomorrow night at a gala in recognition of all of his efforts. But this program has really highlighted the fact that this is a needed program in our community. We're going to continue to see more, hear more on it. The work that we've had from our local nonprofits has been tremendous and they really are saving lives. I think it's super important to understand that for every criminal case, we might have many, many victims or potential victims associated with offenders. So these lives are important to our community and how our community grows and survives. Do you want to say anything?
I just truly appreciate the support. I thank you all for the support in the last two years. It's been it's been busy. We we kicked right off the ground immediately. And there's a couple of things I'd like to point out as far as the the community that we serve and the community that we've we've impacted. You know, you think of the the age ranges, let's say, for example, the age ranges of people that we work with. And we brought up some statistics, but some of the age ranges of people that we've worked with that really have an impact that you really don't think of a whole lot, which would be the younger generation, the 13 to 17-year-olds. Just in the last year, our statistics, we we impacted five victims between those age groups of human trafficking victims. And then another side of the other side of that scale is 60 and over. Think of the the elderly, we've we've impacted two victims that were over the age of 60 years old and then everything in between. We've had extremely busy year and I truly appreciate the support.
Thank you very much.
And then I can answer any questions about this specific donation if anybody has it.
Absolutely. Thank you again for your work. Thank you for your commitment. Thank you and congratulations. So questions or comments? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Congratulations, Captain. I just want to say from this grandpa's perspective, this is probably the most important thing that I feel like I'm voting on today just because it's maybe the first step in a lot more awareness, which is critical because this has been an issue that's, even though it's been going on a long time, it's we've somehow had blinders on, not law enforcement, you've always been aware, but just the general public. We've had our head in the sand. So I appreciate all this work and I hope we ramp it up and ramp it up until we can cut this cancer out of our, you know, society. So thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be quick, just one quick question. You mentioned that these are donated funds. Are we like thinking that the funds from the Justice Department are going to run out or is it just they are?
Yeah. It's been a three-year grant. We have six months left of this three-year grant. There is a possibility of getting an additional grant then to continue on and we are applying for that. I just think it's important that we all understand this is not a project. This is an ongoing need in our community that at some point we will run out of other funding opportunities and we'll and we'll bring it back here to continue on with general funds. This initial grant was largely focused on organization and training and helping to identify what needs to be done in our community so that three-year period. And a lot of that has been set up with these funds, so the next grant would be more of a operational funding source for the the next grant period, which we'd hope would be three years. But you'll know more about that if we get it. We'll bring it back. Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I I just want to applaud the sheriff and captain for all the work on this and in finding these these funding sources to be able to do more. I think it's excellent that it's not just a criminal justice approach, but that the heart of this seems to me to be justice for the victims of human trafficking and even more so to rescue these people that are end up in our community in these circumstances from from these horrible circumstances. So so I applaud that that holistic thinking for these issues. And I greatly support figuring out how to fund this in a more stable, ongoing way in the future as as you said, this is issue is not going away and we need, it's it's one of the most critical in my view, just because the the circumstances are so horrific. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I see none. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Merchant. McLeod.
Yes.
LaGrand. Coleman. Hildenbrand. Hennessy. Vice Chair Green. Commissioners Diaz. DeBoer. Burl. Boujack. Brevi. Baker. Antor. Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 16 is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to item 8, and I will call on Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move resolution 17 of today's date to accept the State of Michigan grant to support collaborative task forces focused on combating human trafficking, coming to us from the Sheriff's Office.
Very good. Is there support on this one? Supported by Commissioner Teal? Questions or comments on this one? Comparable to the last one? Again, thank you, Sheriff. Uh, I think this is a voice vote, so I will just say, all those that support the motion, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. It is approved. Thank you. I'll now call on Commissioner Antor for item 8J.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move resolution 18, which is a proactive law enforcement grant coming out of the Sheriff's Office.
Great. Is, supported by Commissioner Coleman, I'm sorry. Questions or comments? If not, this is also a voice vote. All those that support the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. It too is approved. All right. We'll move to the next item, and I will call on Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move resolution 19, quit, quit claimed deed from the joint commission, coming to us from the Administrator's Office.
Is there support on that one? Supported over here on my right by Commissioner Hildebrand. Questions or comments on this one? I see none, and this is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution 19, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Teal. Sparks. Ponstein. Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King. Merchant. McLeod. LaGrand. Coleman. Hildenbrand. Hennessy. Vice Chair Green. Commissioners Diaz. DeBoer. Burl. Boujack. Brevi. Baker. Antor. Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 19 is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to the next item, and I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move resolution 20 of today's date to transfer fifth-third foundation funds held in trust by Samara Task to support the West Michigan Welcome Home Plan with the Administrator's Office.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported over here by Commissioner Diaz. Questions or comments on this one? I see none. This is a voice vote. All those that support, please say yes.
Yes.
That oppose, say no. It is approved, and that brings us to the end of our resolutions for the day. We are now up to our second opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to address us on matters that are within our general jurisdiction, you may do so at this time. Please identify yourself by name and your address, and you have up to three minutes. I could talk as fast as you, can't I?
Something like that. How y'all doing? I'm Dee Jones, passionate visionary. I don't have to explain my passion. I think you guys seen it and felt that. But I'm very excited. On June 8th of 2024, we're bringing $100,000 esports finals to the DeVos place. So I asked you guys a year ago, before people around the community and other people started comparing our projects and stuff like that, I asked you guys specifically just to fund the esports competition, and now that is coming full circle. I'm really, really big on universal energies, and I'm a big believer in karma, and I just love to just prove people wrong, because I know how people can be two-faced and fake and, you know, smiling, joking your face and stuff like that, and then be talking behind your back. So me, Dee Jones, I don't talk about anybody's back. I have never said anything negative about politicians, even, uh, other people that were on previous boards before some of you guys were elected, and people asked me to come to the board and bash those people, even though I had a lot of things that I really could have just torn them a new one. I just didn't say nothing, just because that's not who I am as a person. But I stand here in my confidence and just happy to bring $100,000 esports finals to our city, our state, our county. I'm really excited to see the economic impact that I'm going to bring here, because I'm an African American, the second worst city, bringing $100,000 esports finals to one of the worst places for African Americans economically on the planet, and I'm very excited for this. Also, with the Youth Justice Esports League, I had an article go out, and it was so powerful that the news actually showed up to the courthouse to actually get a story on it. I had two news stations show up, and I was at home, and I got a call from Kent County, uh, Juvenile Services saying, hey, we got two news stations where all of the judges are all connected and speaking. So I know how powerful I am, and I'm just going to keep do, being the passionate individual and authentic, genuine person that I am, because that's all I've been. That's all I've done this whole entire time, is just be Dee Jones, be passionate, show up, be consistent. My consistency, but persistence, uh, I, I probably have better attendance than some of the people on the board. But I've showed up, and I asked you guys specific things, and I know for a fact that I'm going to create change. I'm going to create universal change. I'm a natural-born leader, and I'm going to continue to lead. Nobody's going to knock me off my square. I'm going to stay 10 tones down like I walk in this hall, like I walk in the hood, like I walk everywhere. I asked you guys to disfund the esports competition. I know that you guys supported that. I'm not knocking that. I have bipartisan support for my ideals, and I really am excited, excited to truly bring this and see economic change. I'm really excited for this, and I'm really happy to show you guys what esports can do for our county, for everyone, for all of your districts, for everyone's districts. I really care about Kent County, the state, the city. I really care about the other cities too, because if this county and this city isn't doing good, then obviously it has an effect on everyone else, the city and districts. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. I see no one else. With that, we will then move to the Administrator's Report.
Point of order, Chair Steck? Or point of question? Um, as I recall, uh, prior to the beginning of this meeting, um, you used your prerogative to move our special order of business, the public hearing for the establishment of Brownfield Authority.
Did.
Is that going to be, uh, the very last, or is that going to be postponed to another meeting?
No, we're going to do it today after this, but before reports.
Thank you.
It should not take long, I'm told, but... Thank you. So with that, we are to the Administrator's Report.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to pass. There's nothing that can't be covered in my weekly report or the digest, so nothing that urgent, so...
Thank you for that report, Mr. Hildebrand. Now, uh, we will, Josh, are you ready for this? We're going to now go with the, um, establishment of the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, a public hearing for that. So I will open a public hearing on the question and issue of establishing a Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Anyone wish to comment or address that? No one does? I will close the public hearing on that. Thank you. All right. Now we'll move on. Told you it'd be painless. Reports. Anyone have a report? Uh, I see none, so I guess that's left to me. I have one report item, and that is, uh, I have, uh, made one additional appointment to the Executive Committee. As you might recall, under the new standing rules that are scheduled to take effect next year, there is provision for the capacity to appoint an additional member to the Executive Committee. Uh, however, under the existing rules, I have the authority to, uh, to ask an individual to serve on that capacity in an adjunct role, and I have done that. I think it's important in, uh, in our work over the course of this year that we make sure that the Executive Committee has good representation. Most of you understand and know that essentially what we do at the Executive Committee is a matter of vetting, discussing, and evaluating, uh, the scheduling of issues. We don't make substantive decisions, but we do look at how do we best present issues to this board. As a consequence, that is why I wanted to do this. I've asked, uh, Commissioner McLeod to serve in that role. She has graciously agreed to do that, so I have appointed her as an adjunct member of the Executive Committee going forward for this year. Any other reports? All right. Then we're to miscellaneous. Any miscellaneous? Yes, Commissioner Ponstein.
So I want to thank the Chair for a little leeway on my miscellaneous.
You're taking it to a new level, Commissioner.
So, uh, my term as President of MAC came to an end this, this past fall. Um, I don't think anyone can say or criticize me of not representing and standing up for all 83 counties. Uh, prior to being, uh, appointed President, I revisited all 83 counties, and one thing I learned from that is that they are all very unique. So in celebration of MAC's 125th anniversary, which she just completed, uh, there's nothing else more unique than our counties than their seals. So I have a gift for Al and Stan to put up somewhere here in the county building. So if you guys could come forward, yeah. It's a Grease guy, I swear. So on behalf of the Michigan Association of Counties, there is a print of every single county seal of all 83 counties. And it's all for you guys to enjoy here. All right.
A county seal cake.
All right. Well, anyone want to follow up on that? Yes, Mr. Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. Um, uh, first and foremost, I want to, um, congratulate Commissioner McLeod for her appointment to the Executive Committee, uh, and commend you for your decision to appoint her. Um, uh, you know, I, for starters, I think we, uh, can all agree, there's no one more talented, more, um, knowledgeable, more driven, uh, to serve in that capacity, and on top of that, um, she will be the first person of color to serve on our Executive Committee. Admittedly, I think we can all, uh, agree that firsts like that in 2024 are a little too late, but regardless, it is something that we can, uh, be proud of and take joy in, especially given, uh, someone so deserving and, uh, accomplished, and I'm excited to serve with her on the Executive Committee. Uh, I also wanted to just note, while, um, they were not in attendance due to the scheduling conflict, uh, and the longer meeting that we ended up having, um, the Grand Rapids Chamber of Commerce did send a written communication in support of the Brownfield Authority. I also believe we had, uh, representatives previously here from Housing Next also, uh, planning to speak in favor of the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, um, and, uh, just wanted to note that, um, uh, their intent and, and the written communication we all received, uh, this morning. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Green. Vice Chair Green, sorry.
Thank you, Chair Steck.
Or is it Chair Pro Tem Green?
Former Chair Pro Tem. So I just wanted to, uh, echo, it seemed like a while ago, but, um, Commissioner Antor, in his vacation, took a moment to honor, uh, Steve Warren, and I just wanted to echo his comments. Um, one of the nicest guys that I think any of us met. Um, and I said last night, and I was musing on social media, that I, I still have never heard somebody say a bad word about Steve Warren. So, um, just a tremendous public servant, and, uh, I know we'll, uh, continue to keep his family, uh, in our prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Ponstein? All right.
Thank you, Chair Steck. Uh, so Commissioner Diaz, next to me, has, uh, been putting together a, uh, support letter for, uh, Drive Safe, and, you know, there's getting a lot of different press. People want to make it a partisan issue. Uh, I have agreed to sign on to it. Uh, I spent, uh, a long time on the phone with a couple farmers in this community, and if you don't know about our ag sector, not just in Kent County, but the state and the country, uh, they're facing a lot of problems. Uh, wages are now going up, uh, a lot of, a lot of times by government, uh, controls. Uh, you know, the, it, the cost of inflation, the cost of doing business. Uh, one of the other problems they have is they can't find workers, and then when they do find someone with an immigrant background, uh, that doesn't have the citizenship, they can't drive. Well, I don't know if a farm worker's a good farm worker if you can't drive, and the farmer's got to worry whether the person's going to be pulled over and being arrested. So I think the resolution that I've been put together, uh, is very thoughtful. Uh, there's no mention, in fact, it highlights in it that, uh, these aren't, uh, driver's licenses that can be used to vote. So I encourage, uh, others to sign on to this. Uh, the effect of it is going to be far-reaching, but more importantly to the ag sector, uh, they've been hit hardest over COVID and you name it for, for, for decades, and, uh, so it's just a way to support them and their call for help. And I'll just leave that at that.
Thank you. Any other miscellaneous? All right. If not, I have just a couple items. First, uh, I join my colleagues, uh, in acknowledging the life and, um, and career and service of Dee Warren, uh, a great individual, a great public servant. I, uh, had the great honor to speak at his retirement not all that long ago, and, um, uh, he is, uh, he has been a, um, a leader there and a leader in this community for many years. He will be greatly missed. Secondly, um, thank you for raising that, Commissioner Ponstein. I know the letter is out there. I did issue a statement just to clarify on the record that, uh, the issue with respect to, uh, that legislation is not one that this commission has any responsibility or jurisdiction on. Just want to make it clear, your execution or signing on on that is an individual decision that you may or may not make, up to you, but it has nothing to do with your role and responsibility here. Let's see. Third, um, thank you for your patience over the last week. Um, I will say, uh, for me personally, it's been a week from, I guess I can't say that from here. It's been a week from Hades. Um, yeah, in my perspective, uh, having to wrestle with, uh, the circumstances that I found myself in, um, thank you to, uh, my vice chair for stepping in so ably, uh, and filling the role of addressing those issues. Uh, I hope that, um, that's the last time in my career I ever have to do that. Um, but again, my apologies and thank you for your patience. And then finally, I'm told, um, and I'm going to assume that Vice Chair Green did this when he was sitting here, had lunch ordered.
That's way beyond.
Uh, and I'm told that because of the length of time of this meeting, that, uh, lunch, uh, is or has been ordered, and will be here at about 11:30, just a few minutes from now. And with that, I have no more items today. I'm exhausted with it, and I will call on Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. I move to adjourn subject call the Chair to Thursday, February 2024 at 8:30 a.m. for an official meeting.
All that supports, say yes. We are, we are adjourned. Thank you all.